I see, Chairman.
At this time, I'd like to call the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting to order. With the Secretary, please call the role.
Commissioner Beckles, Commissioner Bowie,
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Vice Chair Fong.
Here.
Chair Beard.
Here. First time is oral communications related to the Housing Authority? Is there any? Okay, seeing now, we'll move on to item number two. Reorganization of the Housing Authority, selection of a Chair and Vice Chair. Except the nominees.
I would recommend keeping status quo unless any of our new colleagues would like to...
I'll make that same offer if anybody would like to take this over. I'm willing to head it up.
I'll do that, if you like.
Do the Housing Authority?
Yeah, sure.
It's up to you. Okay, I nominate Val Nguyen as Chair.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote.
We are going to have to be doing roll call votes because our board doesn't work tonight.
Commissioner Bowie.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fong.
Yes.
Chair Beard.
Yes. And meeting over to you.
All right. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'll assume that.
Who was it before?
It was me.
Oh, yeah. I'll nominate Commissioner...
You can do it.
What's up to you?
I'll nominate Beard.
I'll nominate...
The nomination for Commissioner Beard. Is there a second?
I second it.
Let's call for a vote.
Yes.
City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Bowie.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fong.
Yes.
Chair Beard.
Yes.
And we have received and filed the Housing Authority's status reports from November and December. Is there a motion to approve?
So I move? Second?
Offer a vote. I'm sorry. Is that your job, Kathy?
Hmm?
Is that your job to read that? Okay.
Commissioner Beckles, Commissioner Bowie.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fong.
Yes.
Chair Beard.
Yes.
Okay, and it does not look like we have any public hearings. Any matters from the members of the Commission? Are we gonna start? Commissioner Beard?
No.
Commissioner Bowie? Nobody? Okay. With that, we will adjourn the Housing Authority. And the next regular meeting of the Housing Authority will be on Tuesday, February 24th, at 6:30 here at the Community Meeting Center. Thank you, Commissioner O'Connor, for being here. Are we doing the sanitation? Sanitary? Not yet. After... Yeah, later. It looks confusing because it says you do oral communications for all the different... All in one shot? So we'll open up the regular meeting now?
Yeah.
I'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Beard.
Here.
Commissioner Bowie.
Here.
I'm sorry, Councilmember and Councilmember. Councilmember Fong.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes. And we have the invocation. Shall we all rise?
All right, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless all who assemble here this evening and the work that we seek to do. Help us to be tender-hearted and kind to one another and to be forgiving of one another. Purify our intentions and strengthen our purpose. Help us to walk in harmony as we seek to make the best decisions for our Garden Grove community, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'd like to ask our Clerk to lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance.
Put your hands on your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a presentation this evening. I'd like to have a report from the Orange County Human Relations Commission.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Council, you do have a presentation this evening. We are honored to have Tim Cole with us this evening to talk about the Commission and its activities, and he will be joined by Christian. So, Tim, welcome to Garden Grove.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, Mr. Manager, Madam Clerk, and Chief Elgin. My name is Tim Cole, and with me is Christian Lopez. We're both pleased to be here from Orange County Human Relations, nonprofit organization, and here to report to you some data points about some of the things our nonprofit organization has done in Garden Grove specifically over the past year, and also to present you with copies of our annual report, which I furnished to you through the Clerk. Just briefly about Orange County Human Relations. We believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence, and so we provide programs to create safe, respectful communities. This year, as our communities became more diverse and our world became smaller, we saw an increase in some profane, abusive, and hateful speech in some city councils throughout the... City Council meetings throughout the county. Obviously, this makes your job more difficult as you strive to balance free speech with protecting people from disrespectful speech and maintaining civility. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Christian to give you some information about the programs that we've provided to you over the past couple of years.
Great, thank you, Mr. Cole. Do you mind taking that mic down, actually?
Thank you.
Hello. Orange County Human Relations partners with cities to manage challenges, challenging issues, and meaningful participation of all residents in the decision-making process, maintaining civility, and healing as a community in a wake of difficult conflicts. Many of our programs are provided countywide, but we would like to share the following data about some of our additional services exclusively for Garden Grove. We mediated 312 cases as well as 42 family mediation in the community or courts where one of the parties was a resident of Garden Grove. In collaboration with Garden Grove Police on Hate Crimes and Individuals or Community Groups on Hate Incidents, they are not crimes, we documented five hate crimes in Garden Grove in 2013. Two Garden Grove youth attended in the summer leadership camp and one participated in the year-long human relations internship program. Sixty-eight Garden Grove students participated in our day-long Walk in My Shoes Symposium at Cal State Fullerton, learning about respect, tolerance, and making a difference in our school and community. We sought to build a sense of community with Garden Grove residents and staff through hate crime and victim support.
Thank you, Christian. And just before I make a couple of concluding remarks, I was remiss in feeling to mention that Commissioner Bong von Fong, who sits on Orange County Human Relations, who understand and knows each of you, wanted to send her regrets. She had planned to participate, to attend personally to share with you this information, but she had a last-minute emergency come up that pulled her away. So in conclusion, over the past 22 years, Orange County Human Relations has partnered with cities in our county to proactively build positive relations among diverse residents, bring police and diverse residents together to build safe and respectful communities, to address tragic conflicts, to overcome the divisiveness that erodes our sense of community, and to sustain the infrastructure to assist in crisis situations when they occur. Just as tangible infrastructure protects Garden Grove's residents, the human relations infrastructure protects its communities through intergroup relations programs, trained staff, positive relationships among diverse groups in our community. Orange County Human Relations is proud to provide these cities to the residents of Garden Grove. And now, if I may, I'd like to present a token of our appreciation to the mayor. We have a certificate of appreciation for the support of good human relations that Garden Grove has promoted in the 2013-2014 period, and I have a...
Thank you.
...certificate of recognition.
He's not expecting this?
Thank you.
I gladly accept this beautiful certificate on behalf of the Garden Grove City Council. And, you know, thank you for the work that you do. The Orange County Board of Supervisors and their support for the Orange County Human Relations and the Human Relations Commission is really important. I know that there are partnerships in our schools and our community, and these partnerships really develop a sense of unity, a sense of tolerance and openness in our community, and that's very important, and I definitely support that. And I'm also very grateful that when I was a student at UC Irvine, I was a student in the mediation courses, and that's how I received my California State Certification in Mediation. So I'm actually a product of your programs as well, so thank you. And thank you, Christian Lopez, for being here. I know I graduated from Garden Grove High School. It's great to see you again. Thank you. Now we have oral communications. This is with the successor agency and the sanitary district, along with the City Council. Thank you, City Manager. We have John O'Neill. Mr. O'Neill?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, City Manager, Madam Clerk. It's great to be here with you tonight. I came to speak on the Commission appointments. I wanted to come here personally and express my desire to continue on a Commission. The last two years, I've been on the Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission as Vice Chair and Chairman. I have applied to the Planning Commission, the Traffic Commission, and also the Neighborhood Commission. So wherever I can serve, I would be happy to serve in a capacity there. I wanted to give you a little bit of my history. I know a lot of you know who I am, but maybe other people don't. I'm a lifelong resident here, and my working career started when I was 13 years old in the hotel business in Anaheim. Friends of the family owned a hotel there. So that's where I got my construction knowledge, starting out. Hey, I was kind of interested in this. And I went into construction instead of going to a four-year college. I went through an apprenticeship program in Orange County, the Orange County Electrical Training Trust. And it was one of the greatest moves I ever did. I have a 30-year career in the construction industry here in Orange County. I've worked on projects like Disneyland, the original Splash Mountain, retrofit of Splash Mountain, America Sings, Innovations, a lot of Disney projects. General Telephone, if you remember, before Verizon was, there was General Telephone. I've worked in over 500 central offices in California for Verizon. I was the general lead supervisor for the electrical installation of Seagulls from High School in 2003 and '04. That's a 40-acre campus, and it was state-of-the-art construction. So I've been on multi-hundred-million-dollar projects. I have a vast knowledge in the construction industry, so I think I could be of value with my abilities to the city as a planning commission, if that's available. If not, I think I would... I definitely want to serve on the Neighborhood Commission, and I have some ideas there. I believe in commitment in attending when you're appointed to a Commission. You know, if you make that commitment, I would expect to be at every meeting unless there's some emergency that would take you away. So I believe in commitment there. I have a commitment to my industry, my work, my wife of 30 years... Well, 29 years this year. Thirty years, February 13th, we've been together. And three children, grown children. One's at Chapman University, very proud of her. And I just would like to... What else I've got here? I've worked in places like the Garden Grove School District, hundreds... Millions of dollars' worth of work. Santa School District, TRW, Boeing, McDonald Douglas. I've worked on laboratories. I've met presidents and people at McDonald Douglas back in the '90s, and worked on laboratories for building satellites for space, and then I transferred that into building Space Mountain at Disneyland. So be happy to serve, happy to serve in any capacity I can here in the city, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Mr. Craig Durfee?
Yeah, the Mayor and staff and residents, I have three points today. One is I see the... Which I wasn't aware of, the selection for the Traffic Committee. I just want to say on the merits of the Mayor of Westminster and OCTA recommendations of my work, in the state of California, I work on these issues. Last night, we had an OCTA meeting regarding law enforcement engineers regarding pedestrian safety. I ask your consideration to look at this a little closer because you're gonna need somebody who has the experience. What's coming down the line is miles tax, not by gallon. And your plans and your city, your master plan, it's gonna require somebody that has the pulse of the city and the state. And I'm willing to serve for that purpose because we've already had a loss of life, and we've brought it down with the great chief we've had. So I would say that on that, based on what I do for mayors and others, to reconsider that. And then I'd like to bring to your attention quickly with my five minutes that the city of Garden Grove, if it wants to be a business-friendly business, they have to help like Papa Willie's and change your business parking code to current standards in 1991. He's asking, so it's Richard. This is gonna be one of the things you're gonna have a roadblock is your general policies and plans, your circulation and element are not being implemented. I have to be frank with you because what's gonna happen eventually, when this thing does go from pilot project, other states are doing it, you're gonna go, why, we didn't think about it 10, five years ago or three years ago? We have to start setting before the master plan. We have to start identifying our policies related to the current standards. And in your general plan, it does say that it's not a static, it's a concurrent fluid, basically, to update it. So I'm only suggesting to and ask consideration and advising this council to take what used to be a Strawberry Fields and Orange Groves when I was a kid and bring it to the 21st century with your policies. Now, I'm here tonight on behalf of representation of the petition related to the PTA of Garden Grove High School. I'm gonna speak, and then they're gonna put their comments before that. I did attend, and I asked them what they wanted to hear in terms of their concerns. And prior to the meeting, I had to call 911 because there was more than 10 cars racing down the street here in front of me. There's other situations. Because of limited time, I recommend we have a workshop with the Schools Committee with the city officials, as is recommended in the Manual Form Traffic Control Device Engineering Standards, and let's see if we can bridge the flaws and deficiencies to what OCTA's policy is, the board is to mitigate, and our Councilman is on that, on pedestrian deaths. So with that, I would suggest that we, according to here on five-point neighborhood traffic management, address neighbors' traffic concerns by taking minor measures such as installing signs, striping, or pavement, stress long-term traffic concerns, and more restrictive physical measures. It's been three years, and they've been begging and begging. So they will tell you that they are not getting an answer. Both government agencies, according to the Manual Form Traffic Control and your own policies, are not being applied. Says here, upon the request of local school district responsible traffic authorities shall investigate along the school route a recommended appropriate traffic control measures, CVC 21373. The school shall and can be responsible involved in process requests for traffic, safety controls, and safety programs, programs like Safe Route School, which is in your general plan, suggested, and can coordinate activities between the community and public agencies. That's City of Garden Grove and the Garden Grove School District. Upon the general circulation plan, the city has adopted traffic engineering policies. The city adopted traffic engineering policy, reduce speeding, which is occurring. Also, I called 911 on Main Street in front of Gem Theater with... I guess you were gonna have Steve, there was a lunch next door with that Gem Theater next door, and he witnessed and spoke on the phone of them going over 40 miles an hour down from Stanford by the Methodist Church, going west on occasion, and then coming back, going east, and never stopped the stop sign or stop the crosswalk. They plowed right through it. Says here, hotline number, reduce the number of motors who drive in excessive speed, address neighborhood traffic concerns. Traffic concerns, PTA. And the CRI, MIP, 6G, encourage bicycle safety awareness, class, community centers or parks. Consider implementing the Safe Route School program. Qualify, continue to pursue and monitor funding sources, bikeway facilities. Everything I'm hearing is what's gonna happen, and it's not being applied. You know, if I don't get appointed to the Traffic Commission, that's your discretion. I'm only here to save lives. Now, if these people are qualified to get you where you want to go in terms of the SB 743, help yourself. But that's your decision, and Steve knows. I've been to all those board meetings, and I have the respect of all the board members. That's the truth. So I see the list now, that's fine, but you're gonna have to have someone, you're gonna pay for it, or you can get it free, that'll get you there. Thank you.
Ms. LeAnn Dotson?
Hello, I am... To all of you, I'm LeAnn Dotson. I am the PTA President for Garden Grove High School and have been for six years. Have been at Garden Grove High School for 10 years. We have tried and tried and tried to have meetings between the city, the school district, the... I don't even remember all of them. Anyway, we're not getting anywhere. We did get a new crosswalk, which is unsafe and does not work worth a doggone. We would like to see that we can get a committee together for the city, the traffic, the district, my parents, my youth that care about our students. We have two crosswalks. You guys are here all the time, you should see this. You have two crosswalks. The kids, the one down here, one of my kids almost got hit. I have parents on my PTA board that say, LeAnn, why can't we help our students? We have lights over here. You have a fourth of the people that cross that crosswalk. We have no lights, no stop signs, where we have 2,600 students. And we drive our kids to school today. When I went to school, I walked. My kids don't know what walking to school is. Not in the snow and not five miles. Okay. Anyway...
Kill both ways.
We need to do something for our students before we have a student that is killed in one of those crosswalks, and then we're gonna say, why didn't we do something? I've been fighting it for three years. This is my fourth year, and I would like to see, especially after voting today, I'd like to see us do something to help our students. You've got Going Fast, they would like to see a crosswalk in the center so that our parents don't drop them off. You have Euclid starting construction, and we have parents that drop them off at the church. They drop off in the library parking lot, and now it is horrible to drive down the street in the morning. So I'd like to challenge all of you, and all of you that are listening, to drive down the street in the morning during school and in the afternoon, and tell me we don't need to take care of our students. So, safety, 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 and aboard.
Thank you.
I've got the parents for it.
Ms. Yolanda Amaro?
Good evening. I'm also a concerned parent. I've had my two boys, one graduate from here three years ago, and I have a senior this year. We're gonna be leaving the district. But I have a lot of friends that have almost hit kids. Their kids are almost getting hit on the crosswalks. There's no signage on this one over here, on the ground, or... On the curb. Yes, and the curbs are not cut for the handicap over here. There's double parking. I mean, a lot of with LeAnn, I've known LeAnn for a lot of years. Our sons are basically the same age. She's repeated everything that I want to say. I am very concerned. I brought another parent with me. She's got one more year. She's been at school for eight years also. We had a few other parents that have had close calls with their kids. We no longer let our kids even cross. We drop them off in front, on the side, over here. We just don't trust that other parents... It's not so much the parent, it's the kids. Some of the kids are not... They don't look up when they walk. They just step off, one at a time. So there's no organization as... If there was a cross guard, if there was lighting or anything, for them to follow a rule. They need a rule. Something to...
Safe Route School?
Yes. We just... One of our other parents saw a kid get hit. He just jetted across when there was no one else. There was a lady in front of her, and she got... Saw a kid. He got grazed, but because they don't... They're not paying attention, and there's nothing for them to abide by, he got hit. He wasn't injured very much. But the point is, there's no safety rules there. So, same thing as LeAnn, we want to challenge you guys to drive down the street in the morning, anywhere from 6 to 3 o'clock. There's a lot of sports going on, and with the construction, there's no organization. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amaro. Patty Widdicombe?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, staff, and residents of Garden Grove. My name is Patty Widdicombe, and I'm the owner of the McDonald's Restaurants in Garden Grove. My parents opened the first McDonald's in Garden Grove in 1957. It was the 11th McDonald's open in the world, and there are now 33,000 McDonald's in 118 countries. So it's a success story. But what I'm here for this evening is to talk briefly about how the impact of special events in Garden Grove and road construction has affected not only my business, but other businesses in the community. Now first, however, I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of what McDonald's does economically for the community. When you look at the amount of sales tax generated from McDonald's, we are at number 15 in the city. We generate $80,000 just for the city every year per restaurant. So that's over a half a million dollars in tax revenue. It's estimated that each McDonald's puts $1.1 million back into the community every year. So that's $7.7 million back into the community. We provide, in Garden Grove only, 455 jobs. So that's, I think, the second-largest employer in the city. Since 1957, when we first opened our restaurant on Harbin-Lamson, we have never received any tax incentives. We've never received any redevelopment money. It's all from the ground up, just hard work, day in and day out. So the first of two special events, I just wanted to tell you what the impact was, was the Cyclavia event we had on October 12th. My one restaurant on Garden Grove Boulevard for that day was down 80% in sales. The street, Garden Grove Boulevard, was closed for 12 hours. I understand community events, but if we had worked it from a logical standpoint, when we closed the street and when we opened it, I just still can't figure out why we were closed 12 hours for a four-hour event. We need to have communication... We need to have communication and a working relationship with the city when we have these special events. The second special event happened on January 18th, that was a Star Wars Half Marathon. This event closed Harbor Boulevard, several lanes, Garden Grove Boulevard, and Euclid, which impacted two of my restaurants. I think one of the most disturbing things about that is, I became aware of it by reading a small paragraph in the Orange County Register. I then followed up on it, I called Mike Bone, the organizer of the event, and he told me he had been instructed by the city to notify all the major businesses. I was never told. So that in itself was very disturbing to me. I'd like to also point out that the registration for that half marathon was between twenty dollars and three hundred and fifty dollars, depending on what the participant chose, and there were twelve thousand participants in that race. So it was overwhelming success. So one of the seven recommendations I'm gonna make in just a moment is, anytime we impact businesses in our community, I think we need to look at how we can help the community as well. Each, each one of those twelve thousand participants had donated even five dollars to perhaps Acacia or the Boys and Girls Club. We would have generated sixty thousand dollars for the community, and instead we took all that money to close down the streets and to impact the businesses in Garden Grove. So I think there's a way we can work it a little smarter as well. Road construction. It's time to start doing things a little bit differently. Businesses is really tight, it's extremely difficult to run a profitable business with prolonged construction. I know many of the people in the room tonight experienced the, what I have to say, a horrible, unbelievably long construction project on Valley View. That construction project in the year 2014 contributed to a decline in sales of my Valley View restaurant of three hundred thousand dollars. I laid off twelve employees that haven't been hired back yet. So we need a lot more cooperation with the Public Works Department, because now we're moving into a reconstruction project on Harbor Boulevard. We're now tearing up the medium that we just put in two years ago. So I'm gonna run out of time, but I do have seven quick recommendations. One is, when the city has community events, if they could please inform the businesses. When we get a business license, we tell you our email address, our phone number, and our address. Can you please tell us what's happening? Secondly, when we have community events, only invite businesses to participate in the event that are actually businesses in Garden Grove. For instance, looking at the Cycle of Via, I was down eighty percent in sales and we had food trucks from outside of the city providing food services. When we have special events, let's see if we can't generate some charitable contributions to our own charities in the city. And when we have road construction, inform the businesses. Ask us our opinion on how the project should be scheduled and managed to minimize impact. Consider project timeframes when awarding bids and impose a penalty when they're not done on time. And I ask Public Works to try to learn and appreciate what the business community does. Think of us as a partner, not as the enemy, as we do these projects that are so necessary in the city. After all, the taxpayers are really the people that sign the paychecks of the people that work for the city. So I think those are, would be my second recommendations, how we can work together and partner so the business communities aren't affected so tremendously by special events and road construction. And thank you.
Thank you. Rod Powell?
Okay, my name is Rod Powell, and first off, I have my opinions on what the previous speaker said about, I'm not gonna go into that because there's just not enough time, five minutes is not enough time. However, the first real job that I ever had was at Harbor and Lamson McDonald's, so. I'm, I'm the one that put my hand in the grease vat, and that was my last day working there, but that's another story. Anyways, to all the speakers that spoke before me, I try, I'll be honest, I tried to cut in front of you because I had to be somewhere by 7:15. And just to let you know, I asked the mayor if he would put me first, and he said, well, I'll, I'll go in order.
It didn't happen. You're, you're late.
No, he said he would go in order.
It's 7:15 now.
He promised me he would go in order, and, you know, I appreciate that because I, you know, the previous mayor, probably, he, he might have let me go first, and he definitely put me last, definitely put me last the last couple of weeks, you know, so that just says a lot about your, your character, and so I appreciate that. Probably the best traffic commissioner we had was Robin Marcario. I used to call her all the time when I knew she was the traffic commissioner, you know, with all kinds of problems, you know? It's such an important commission, and to everyone that does that, they do it voluntarily, nobody's getting paid anything, and so, you know, I respect people that are willing to be on these commissions. Now granted, some people get on commissions for political purposes, as in the planning commission, as in Tom Bonikowski, if I can mention names, Janet Wynn's husband, who was on the planning commission. Why? You know, he never showed up, and when he did, contributed not much. I have my opinions about that sort of affair. Anyways, I, I didn't come down here to talk about traffic commission or planning commission or, I came down here for one thing only to say, and I'm gonna say it. We have, from what I understand, always have the fire chief and the police chief in attendance at the city council meetings. So it's struck me recently that we have not heard anything from our fire chief. Now, the fire chief, granted, was, was the former city manager, Matt, how soon we forget their names, Fertal, briefly, and now it's interim, I think it's interim, if I'm not mistaken, fire chief. But yet, with everything that was going on, you know, with our, our former fire chief being put in a separate position, with all the stuff that we had going on, with the city deciding to pay him, you know, half a million dollars for two years to be in a created position, all because of the rumors, I'll call them rumors, that the previous mayor had something to do with his son getting hired onto the fire department, something that probably, according to the rest of the people on the fire department, never would happen with his criminal background, you know? And I'm not criticizing his criminal background, it is what it is, but it shows that our, and it may not be right that our, that that is a unwritten policy of non-hiring. However, it shows, if, if they never hire someone, they never get past a certain point with a criminal record, yet he did. Yet he also, they never, and it went on and on, the things that he kept hanging in there for that never happened, you know? So my point is, we, we have not heard, the, the previous city manager, in the, in the brief period where he was interim fire chief, our city manager was fire chief, he handled this matter of Jeremy Broadwater, and possibly, they were all, there was concern he wasn't gonna get, what do you call it, approved after one year, and that would solve the whole matter? Well, at the last possible second, he gets transferred into a desk position, paying more money. And I, my question is, what is all this going on? Why do we not hear from the fire chief when everybody's upset about this? Every, I mean, I'm not saying everybody, but me and others are concerned about this. You know, this feel, I feel like a lot of skullduggery stuff has gone down, you know? And the end result is we, it contributed to, you know, the mayor losing his election, you know? It's, it contributed to so many negative things, and we say we're gonna move forward. I'm just hoping we can move forward by solving this and not just sweep it as it's a dead issue, that's all. I don't want to go violate no more stuff.
Thank you. Sherri Weeks?
Good evening, everybody. I have been a resident of Garden Grove for sixty-two years, and I just am concerned about a situation, and I'd like to respectfully ask our council members to support the mayor's request to further investigate the agreement between our former city manager and fire chief. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rick Montoya?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. I'm here also to echo Sherri's remarks. I urge each and every one of you to follow the mayor's lead as far as making sure that this matter is dealt with, and if no other reason in the map for transparency here in the city. Let me just, bear with me. It's my understanding that about three years ago, we needed a fire chief, vacancy was open, two or three people applied, a, Mr. Barlog was selected, but it's also understood, understood that maybe something else went on in the background where a son, his son's, or the mayor's son was, excuse me, the mayor's son may have been part of the deal to get him hired. Sure enough, Mr. Barlog's hired, and even though he has criminal convictions, I'm sorry, Mr. Barlog was hired, but, I apologize. The, the point I'm trying to make is that I have a, I believe I have a very bad understanding of what may have happened here, as far as Mr. Barlog's deal, and I don't, I think I agree, I think many of my fellow citizens agree with me, that we don't understand what happened, that we don't know about this deal that happened with him getting more money, a new position, a public safety administrative officer, which I yet to see anything really in concrete. So what I'm trying to say is that I want, I want to know the truth, but until I know the truth, this is my perception. This, this possible backroom shady deal happened, and I think a lot of my fellow citizens agree with, agree with that. Therefore, I, I think we all want clarification, we want to move forward, just like Rod said, but we want to make sure we move forward as long as coming to a grasp of what exactly happened, and then we can then go forward as a city. I apologize for my shaking this up here, but my first time up here. Thank you very much, and that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Torres? Mr. Jim Torres?
Good evening. I'm Jim Torres, Senior Vice Commander of the State of California for the Disabled American Veterans Organization, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff, and the citizens of Garden Grove, where I spend a lot of time. But what I'm here to speak about tonight is a memorial in Sacramento. It's called El Soldado, and that's the soldier. And a group of mothers got together in World War II, and their sons, after Pearl Harbor, they all joined. They fought in Europe, they fought in the islands, they fought in Africa, and so this memorial was dedicated to them. They didn't have the money to build a memorial or anything, and finally, they got the funds and it was put in front of their community center where they usually held their meetings. Other than that, they talked over their fences and at the grocery store. But in 1975, legislation was passed to move it to the state historic park, and where it sits now is right in front of the Capitol Building. You can see the steps of the Capitol Building from the memorial, but it was put there with very little fanfare, and now it's in disrepair. People don't even know it's there when they walk by, and what it looks like is a homeless soldier. So what we're doing now is raising the funds, and all the funds are being raised privately, not government funds, and so I would like to use the Community Courtyard Center. And what we're gonna do, not raise funds there, but we are going to thank the people that did and recognize them, and we're gonna have public speakers, Lou Correa, we're gonna have Sharon Quirk Silva, Loretta Sanchez, Peter Gravid, Bobby McDonald is the president of the Orange County Black Chamber of Commerce, and also the chair of the Orange County Veterans Advisory Council, he'll be there. So there'll be a lot of people, including, I hope everybody sitting in front of me here would attend this, but there's gonna be a lot of high-profile people in the audience. But as we are a nonprofit, you know, we would like to get, for the night, it's gonna be on November 12th, and it'll be from six until eight, two hours, but with cleanup and setup, so we'll have it probably until four to nine. So if you could help us out by giving it to us pro bono for that evening, that would be greatly appreciated. As I said, we are a nonprofit, and so all the money that we raise, we want to go towards this memorial, and what, it's gonna change from the Mexican-American memorial to include all Latinos, Latinos, so all of the Mexican-American, Costa Rica, everywhere that served, will be honored here. All of the Medal of Honor winners will be on there of Latino descent, so that, we're gonna make it a place that shines instead of the place it is now. So I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Robin Marcario? Ms. Marcario?
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, and Garden Grove residents. I'm Robin Marcario. I wanted to also echo some of the other speakers' concerns and hope that the rest of the council will support our new mayor in, in signing the letter to have further clarification and investigation into what's in fact happened and transpired. I think it is very difficult for both the leadership and the citizens to move forward until we have this clarified. So I do hope that the, not only our mayor, but the rest of the council will support the letter to have an investigation to clarify what did transpire, so that we can all learn a bit more in the process. I also wanted to, those of you that are at home and haven't voted, need to get off the chair right now and head down to your voting booth and fulfill your civic duty. You have a range of choices, but we need to have some people get up off the chair and get out there and vote. Okay? Also, I wanted to mention the, you have in front of you your commission appointments. I would also like to encourage the council to put Craig, Craig Durfee on the Traffic Commission. He is versed, he cares, he, he's very detail-oriented, he would be like having an unpaid staff member. We, I see here on the list, we have someone that's been on there for some time, Mr. Dalton, and I think that perhaps, we should perhaps put in Craig Durfee in his stead. That would be my suggestion, for whatever that's worth. Anyway, I, I also see, and I love the way that you put this together, it's very transparent, we can see who the, the proposed nominees are, we can see who the applicants are, and that was much better, much more transparent, and that's a good, good move, that's what we're all trying to do, is get a little transparency here. And with regards to, I put in my name for the Planning Commission. I applied online, and as you know, I've had the opportunity to serve on several of the commissions, whether it's traffic or whether it's neighborhood improvement. I did run for city council in '08, and I had the honor of being the runner-up. I am greatly honored to have received eleven thousand one hundred and ninety-one votes. I am continued to be humbled for the support that I received. And I've also put, continued to contribute to the community. I'm a lifelong member here, graduated Pacifica, just like our mayor. And so I, I contribute in putting up mosaic art, public art that's permanent and long-lasting and offers some bright, bright flowers around the city, and also deters graffiti. So I would like to be considered for the Planning Commission. I did submit an application, and I would really appreciate. I can see on your list here, thankfully, we have Linda Zamora on there. She's a wonderful commissioner, a Latino, and a woman, and we do need more women on our Planning Commission, because we, if there is or happens to be a vacancy, if, if, if all goes well, then you typically choose from the Planning Commission. If you do not have women on the Planning Commission, we will never have a woman appointed to city council. So with that, I would like to be considered for the Planning Commission. I did submit an application, and I thank you all very much for your time. I did submit an application, and I thank you all very much for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff, and residents at home. I'm speaking on a subject that nobody else has really spoke about tonight, but as I, I did send an email to Council, and I'd like to reinforce that with some comments. I opened an email Monday morning. Apparently, the Garden Grove School District has decided that they were going to take Hare Continuation and move it to Chapman and Knott. I'm not sure why. I don't even know if they really are or not. Maybe it's modernization, I'm not really quite sure, but the West Garden Grove, the West Garden Grove residents seems to have weighed in quite heavily on what I would consider to be a very prejudicial and stereotypical mannerism as opposed to, in regards to how those students are portrayed. Some of the comments were things like, they're busing in problems and accusing them of the Garden Grove Unified School District of conspiring to keep the public in the dark, and that these students would contribute to truancy crime and burglary, burglary will increase, and that perhaps they received a P, a CUP violation. And one resident actually said that they're trying to, they were always trying to ruin Garden, West Garden Grove all the time. One person actually said he was getting his picket signs and torches out after he got home from work. I think it was really irresponsible. I do believe that the post came from George Bridingham, who is an administrator on those, on the West Garden Grove Watch. I think it's really inappropriate for a commissioner to speak about students in that regard, much less, I mean, any rational resident, but much less a commissioner. I think this would really disqualify him from serving, even though George and I have had a friendship, if you will, but I do think that these comments are, should really be brought to the attention of the community. I'm not an educator, but I lived around the corner from Hare for, since it opened. I found this, I've worked with, the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association has worked with the students on an Arbor Day project. I found them to be delightful, I found them to be engaged. Many of them that we worked with had jobs after school that were helping support their family, so they liked the fact that they could get out at one. We work with the principal and the educators over there, and I just found them to be not your typical, what you would think of as like a truancy situation. Our voting booth is over there, and I've worked, I've been on the campus just during their day-to-day, and I walk my dog in the park and I see them. So how this group has decided that these are people they don't want in their community and they should stay in Central, personally, I'd like them in Central. I love the campus there, I respect them. I love watching the students, I see them as they're going, they're very, very delightful. So that's number one that I'd like to say is that, first, the rant, I believe it was taken down, but there was over 400 comments, so it wasn't like it was just a one-time thing, which we've all slipped and said, whoops, wish I didn't do that. It kind of went on and on and on. I do support the investigation, but it's nothing new in terms of the bar lag situation. I do support that. I don't think we ever had an end. I think Tony Flores has been beating that drum for quite some time. I hope to get some traction, just so that mainly we know. And my last thing is about the trees on Arbor. I understand that there was a 60-year-old tree that was taken out and 29 others, because they had to do it to redo the two-year-old median. I'd like to put it out there that since Garden Grove Neighborhood Association does an Arbor Day every day, every year, we work with different schools, and we, we also work with the city to put the event together, and I'd like to see if maybe some remedy towards appeasing the people who are sorrowful that the tree is gone, that maybe we could get an estate tree to plant on Arbor Day instead of the ones that we buy for this big, one big one. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, neighbors. Got a few things to speak of. First of all, Patty Whitteman, I'm sorry, I truly enjoyed the Disney Marathon, I thought it was awesome, but I understand your point. As I was out there walking amongst the Jedis and the Imperial Forces and Ewoks and whatnot, I spoke to my neighbors. A couple of them were, well, they said they were not notified that this was happening. Obviously, they don't check my Facebook posts, because they would have known. But there were businesses and residents that were negatively affected. One gentleman missed an entire day of work because he couldn't get his car out of the Main Street parking lot. The gentleman does live on Main Street, and he was trapped. So he was ticked off, and he let me know all about it, because somehow he thought it was my fault. Okay, next, well, you know what, let me continue on that. Lack of communication for these events, or other things. You know, last week, I spilled my guts about the low-income project that's coming to my backyard, four doors down. I spoke with a neighbor and said, why weren't you there? Why didn't you come and fight against this? She said, nobody told me. She lives at the property next door on Stanford, and she was, she did not receive a notice. I said, oh, it would have came in the mail, mine came in the mail. No, no, only water bill. Okay, her name's Chong, and she has broken English, I'm not trying to make fun of her. Chong never got notice of this. Now, there's a lack of communication, and I know that some projects that we do, you're only notified if you live within 500 feet of them. That's not good enough. Let's say a railroad. I remember when we were all discussing the railroads coming through. Well, if you didn't live within 500 feet of it, you didn't know about it. So I think we deserve to do a better job of advertising certain things, large projects, and, you know, like Patty here, she could have made, made, I don't know, somehow it could have worked out better for her. Next. Chris, I voted for you today. Good luck. Bam. At the Methodist church that I ticked off last week. Okay. Craig Durfee for Traffic Commission all the way. There's no more of a passionate person that cares more about our traffic. I mean, if, you guys know this, you're at each meeting, I know this because I'm at each meeting, there's no better choice in my mind of someone we'd want to be involved in our traffic commission. That's just a no-brainer. February 3rd, Garden Grove Historical Society is hosting the president of the Garden, of the Orange County Historical Society. It's your opportunity to come meet Chris Jefferson and learn about the Orange County Archives. So Tuesday night, February 3rd, at the Garden Grove Historical Society. Folks, come on down, it should be a lot of fun, a lot of interesting stuff. My final piece, absolutely, we need to dig into this bar lag fertile fiasco. This, all right, let's, let's just say that was a big dog turd on our city. You don't cover it up, you clean it up, okay? Don't just try and kick dirt over this. We need to dig into this. There's nothing bad about transparency, and that's what we fully need. We, we, we owe the citizens to know what happened. I want all my councilmen to support my mayor and dig into this. It deserves our investigation. We need to know what happened to ensure that this junk does not happen again, and please take that to heart. Thank you.
Did I pronounce your last name right? Please correct me. Canjiano.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Canjiano.
Please speak into the mic. Would you please turn it down? Yeah.
Okay.
So that the, the video picks it up.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Kathy Canjiano, and I'm here representing West Garden Grove Youth Baseball. The league has been in existence for 58 years. Its goal is to promote the idea of growth in baseball skills at all levels, good sportsmanship, integrity, honesty, and respect, so our youth may become strong, well-adjusted members of the community. We accept any child residing in the city of Garden Grove. We have had an annual opening day parade for over 40 years. West Garden Grove Youth Baseball Teams are in the parade, as well as West Grove Girl Softball and Pacifica Baseball Teams. We urge you to please waiver the fees for our parade. We are a nonprofit organization run solely by volunteers. It would be a real hardship for us to have to come up with that kind of money. Thank you for your time. Sorry to interrupt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Beatrice Jones, 40-year resident, Garden Grove, where I've operated and owned American African flags for approximately 20 years. You can check me out at www.bzbanner.com. During that time, I have occasionally appeared before the group to request that the body consider preparing a proclamation for the celebration of Black History Month. I think it's a worthy thing for the city to do, since this is a countywide presentation. I believe it's again fitting and proper to make such a request in this 100th year, celebration of the founding of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, ASALA. ASALA was founded in 1915 by scholar and the second black graduate of Harvard University, Dr. Carter G. Woodson. He is known as a father of Black history. It is this organization that sets the Black History Month theme annually, and this year that theme is a century of Black life, history, and culture. I am grateful for the work of the Orange County Historical, correction, Orange County Heritage Council, in recognizing the work of this organization, ASALA, and celebrating the 35th year of the Black History Parade here in Orange County, by spearheading the Black History Parade and Cultural Fair in downtown Center Street, promenade between Lincoln Avenue and Broadway on Anaheim Boulevard on the 7th of February, Saturday morning. The parade steps off at 10:00 a.m. I'm pleased to know that the mayor is going to participate. Garden Grove has always been a participant, and I'm pleased to hear that. And I too have been asked to serve as a community grand marshal, along with Barbara Juris of Huntington Beach, who coordinates the Orange County Learn Black History classes held every second and fourth Saturday at Rogers Senior Center, unfortunately, in Huntington Beach, for the past year. Disney character Princess Tiana will be Disney's entry in the parade, their first appearance. And the cultural fair, which starts at noon and goes till 4:00, will be an opportunity for youth in a youth village, all ages, a health village for everyone's health, there'll be music and entertainment, and a youth art display. All of Garden Grove is encouraged to come out. We'd love to see you, and enjoy the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I first want to respond to Ms. Maureen Blackbaum insinuating that I was a poster of, of a post that I had nothing to do with. I did not post that post. And she has my phone number, she's called me various times, and all she had to do was call me, and I could have put her in contact with the person who did post that post. I did comment on that post, and most of my comments were trying to get people to be civil towards each other, and trying to, you know, that type of thing. But a, a, as most of you already know, Garden Grove Unified has recently announced their decision to move Hare Continuation School from its current location to the complex located at Chapman and Knott. I come to you tonight for two reasons. First, I want to make my position very clear by verbalization, as opposed to electronic communication. Electronic communications, you're not always effectively communicate your intent. You don't hear voice inflection, context, syntax can be taken out of context due to modified or deleted posts, things can read in a way that they're not actually being presented. Second, I hope to elicit your support and assistance, assistance in facilitating transparency in the governmental process. I want to start by saying, I do not oppose or support this move. However, I do, myself and many others, have questions about this move. I do oppose, however, large decisions like this made by governmental entities without any public hearing or input. It appears, appears that Garden Grove Unified may have made this decision without any public input. No forum or properly noticed hearing. At least 12 homes directly across the street from the location state they never received any notice of any hearing by Garden Grove Unified. I, like all of you, support transparency and public input in the governmental process. A public forum allows elected officials who are in the case, who are in this case, Garden Grove Unified School District, to present facts to the community, to eliminate public concerns, and to take mitigation efforts if citizen concerns are deemed by that elected body to be valid. It also offers the ability of every citizen to be heard and empowered in that process. I have received many communications on this issue and volunteered to take point, not in opposing the move, but in opposing lack of any public input on the move. This is a significant land use change from what was zoned, conditioned, and approved by our city. The permitted use of that junior high, the permitted use was as of a junior high, with the ages of students from 12 to 14 years old. The new use would see an average age changed from, to 16 to 21 years old. Parking is a large question, as there are only currently enough parking spots for staff. Junior high kids didn't need parking. With 16 to 21-year-olds, many are going to need to park. Will busing kids result in longer commutes for them and decreased homework or study time? Currently, the fields are used for many youth sporting activities and community park applications. Will this be able to continue? Security questions, and hours of operations going till 7:30 p.m., all in conflict with what the city approved many years ago. As you can see, most of these questions can be either explained or possibly even mitigated by Garden Grove Unified. However, doing this without any input promotes fear, distrust, and a lack of transparency. I'm not asking for your support or opposition on this move, I am asking you to, that you please use whatever influence you may have as our elected officials to ask Garden Grove Unified to be transparent and to hold public hearing on the decision before the implementation. It appears that patent construction will be completed in the spring, and this move may take place in the next few months. I do plan on attending the next school board meeting to ask them the same. Mr. Mayor, I, you graciously gave me some of your time during the election, and kind of you shaking hands and kissing babies, and, and we sat down and had a cup of coffee, and you told me about your transparency and your, your campaign of public input and transparency, and, and I am very honored and glad to see that you've been committed to that. It's nice and refreshing to have a mayor who lives up day-to-day in his campaign slogans. So with that being said, thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Rose Tingle, and I'm with the Citizens for Animal Shelter, Orange County, and I also write for the Community Editorial Board on the Voice of O.C. And I'm here about Agenda Number 9A, consideration of prohibiting the sale of pets from commercial breeding facilities within the city of Garden Grove, as requested by Councilmember Beard. I would like the Council to consider prohibiting the sale of puppies from pet stores who obtain puppies from commercial breeding facilities within the city of Garden Grove. puppies from commercial breeding facilities within the city of Garden Grove. And the reason for that is there's many statistics and evidence that a lot of these pet stores purchase animals from what they now refer to as puppy mills. And I'll read you a little bit about a puppy mill. Puppy mills are large-scale commercial dog breeding operations which originated in post-World War II era, when farmers looking for an alternate crop reacted to a growing demand for puppies. Most are located in rural communities in the Midwest and southern states, but sell to consumers online, pet stores, and in classified ads. So why should you be concerned? This is not only to protect the animals, but to protect the consumers. Breeding at puppy mills is performed without consideration of genetic quality. This results in generations of dogs with unchecked hereditary defects. Profit is given priority over the well-being of the dogs. To cut costs are due to ignorance or religious beliefs. The animals in these mills may be kept in tiny, unsanitary cages, existing chicken coops, and rabbit-like hutches, and receive little to no nourishment, and often receive no veterinarian care. Some female dogs are kept in the cage their entire life and are bred every time they come into heat, and then destroyed when they are no longer useful. Genetic problems aren't the only issues. Lifelong maladies can result with the expensive vet bills. The city of Garden Grove currently contracts with the County of Orange for animal services, along with seventeen other cities and all the unincorporated areas of Orange County. In two thousand and thirteen, they did not post the two thousand and fourteen figures, so in two thousand and thirteen, thirty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-nine animals were received into the county animal shelter, and almost nine thousand nine hundred were killed. Of course, they use the word euthanized because they want human beings to feel better about it, but a large majority, quite a large majority, came from the cities of Anaheim, Santa Ana, and Garden Grove. So we don't need any more animals in the city of Garden Grove. Lover Boy, which is pictured here, is this the right? Yeah. Okay. He is what they call a golden doodle, and that picture was photographed after he went through a number of tests from an alleged puppy mill. He was bred in rural area Texas, his guardian. We prefer to use the word owner because we're talking about a living being, not an inanimate object. Notice he was limping one day, took him to the vet, got x-rays, and the diagnosis was hip dysplasia. In fact, the Orange County vet stated it was the worst case he had ever seen. The owner has had to incur thousands of dollars in medical bills to help this poor animal. Let's see. Further, don't be lulled into a false sense of security by statements indicating the puppy is AKC-registered. AKC, or American Chemical Club, registration indicates only that the dog's parents were registered as one recognized breed. It does not necessarily indicate the dog comes from a healthy or show-quality bloodline, nor is registration necessarily a reflection on the quality of the breeder or how the puppy was raised. Curiously, the AKC says on their website, "The motto of a responsible breeder of pure bred dogs is bred to improve." Responsible breeders do not breed to make money. So my question is, why does the AKC sanction these large-scale commercial breeding operations? In April of two thousand and thirteen, Lover Boy and I, with documentation in hand, met with Orange County Congressman, Republican John Campbell's Legislative Assistant. My intention was to share information about Lover Boy and affirm our support of Mr. Campbell's bill, H.R. eighty-fourty-seven Puppy Uniform Protection and Safety Act. However, the bill opposed by the AKC, interestingly, has not advanced since February two thousand and thirteen. Also, this past August, the Missouri Right to Farm Amendment won approval by so small a margin, a recount was made, but still it confirmed its passage. Now there is concern that due to the vague wording of the amendment, puppy mills may be protected.
Ms. Tingel?
Yes.
Please wrap it up.
Twenty-five percent of the animals in the animal shelter are pure bred, so you can always go to the animal shelter, or you can go to a breeder, but just make sure that you visit the home of the breeder and see the conditions the puppy is raised in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elizabeth Reginald?
Good evening. Nice to see you sitting there, Mr. Winn. We are pleased that you are our mayor, and I would like to speak tonight. Thank you for having me here and all of the wonderful council and staff and residents. I would like to speak in support of the comments I read today in the Orange County Voice stating that we were actually looking at doing some kind of formal investigation of the whole matter concerning our past fire chief. I have lived in the city now on Bixby Avenue for twenty-three years, and it has been very, very disturbing looking at the press about our city. I love Garden Grove. I enjoy living here, but it's been disgraceful reading about nepotism, alleged nepotism, with our past city manager, with some of our management staff, with some of our previous folks. I think the public spoke. We voted for Mr. Winn. We want transparency. We want a change in how our city is run. We want the cards on the table. We're all grown-ups. We understand what you have to do to have business and confidentiality, but it really is icky when you read about our city in the news media, and they have all these allegations, and the citizens here want a transparent government. We want to participate. We want to understand why decisions were made like this, and we really don't. And I don't know how many of them are even true, the allegations, but it is just icky, and I sometimes feel when I'm reading in the media about our city that we're becoming the belle of Orange County. It's not right. We voted because we want transparency, and I hope all of you get that message loud and clear tonight. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. No more public comments right now, from what I see. So I'd like to see if our city manager can look into the issues that Mr. Durfee brought up regarding parking for businesses and the different codes that perhaps could be updated, and also the petition from the Garden Grove High School PTA on the pedestrian safety, strictly with our students, and come back to our full council on that. You know, I really appreciate the engagement, the level of engagement that we have here in our city. It definitely shows that we all care about our city, and that's evident by the continued engagement by the folks that come and speak. So I want to express my appreciation to all of you for doing that. And, you know, later on, I will move to request to agendize an investigation, and I'll go ahead and read that for you now. And my motion would be to agendize. So it's a process. Basically, we would need to get a second. I would need to get a second on that motion, and then we would vote on it, and then it will come back to the next agenda for discussion. And my motion would be to request the Orange County District Attorney's Office and the Attorney General's Office to investigate the allegations of nepotism involving Garden Grove officials and the legality of subsequent actions, including but not limited to the Barlak settlement agreement. So I do thank the continued interest of the folks who have come here today to share that this is a concern that's shared by many people in Garden Grove. And at this point, do any of the council members have responses to these public comments? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. A couple of things. One, for the city clerk, is did we receive, out of all the commission appointment applications that we received, how many do we receive online?
I have them with me, but quite a few, more than just the paper.
It's, I mean, it's a chance that somebody tried to submit online, it didn't go through. So obviously, I have no idea whether she had an internet connection failure at the time, or whether it was something on our end or whatever, but have you ever heard any other complaints of people that submitted that? Did you finally get some kind of confirmation that it went through, or how do you know?
What we've been doing just for process is, once we receive the application, either online or paper, is we follow up with a hard copy letter to those who send us to it in paper, and then an electronic email to those who send it to us electronically. Unfortunately, that doesn't get out to the people to know that if they don't hear from us, we didn't get it, but that is how we do confirm.
Thanks. And I have one other comment on the other issue that was discussed regarding the school district, and I'm not sure exactly how this works or where it came from, but there's certain entities that are exempt from having to go through public hearing processes. I remember, I learned this several years ago because we were having problems with the Joint Forces Training Base in Los Alamitos that was producing fumes and that kind of stuff that were affecting our West Garden Grove residents, and we kind of, you know, they had all kinds of entrepreneurial operations going on there on the base that never went out to any kind of public hearing. And I mean, that was a question we raised, and we thought, you know, why is it that if they're contemplating putting in a shooting range over there, that there's not some kind of public hearing process or some kind of thing? And same thing goes with the school district. So there is no permit. There is no CUP. There is no permit that defines the ages of the kids, or that kind of thing. If the school district chooses to use the property for a different use, they can. They don't come to the city, and the city doesn't have a chance to weigh in, nor do us as residents or neighbors or concerned citizens about it. So I agree, there's kind of a flaw in the process there, but just to clarify what you said, it's not like they're violating their use permit. There is no use permit.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thanks.
Mr. Fat Buie?
Yes. As a parent of a fifteen-year-old son at the Garden Grove High School across the street here, I sympathize with the concern from the parents about the traffic condition there. There are a lot of difficulty with that, and even though I have not witnessed any, you know, traffic accident yet, but I can understand that it is sometime a dangerous condition. Because as a parent drive through those, you know, area in front of the school, they are very busy and, you know, sidetracked because they need to, you know, find a parking lot to drop their kid off. And if a student roasting to the other side of the street and jaywalking, they could get hit by the accident, by the car. And, but having said that, it is important to point out, like Ms. Protem, Steve Jones had mentioned, the city have little control over whether we would ask the school district or the school to put some volunteer there to, you know, safeguarding the children walking back and forth across the street. And I believe we have our mayor here, who is the former, you know, board of trustee, he would probably comment on whether, you know, at the high school, whether that is required by the school district or not. My understanding is, you know, for children younger, you know, they would have that volunteer to safeguard the safety of students walking across the street. But I do believe that there are a couple things that, you know, the city and the police department could take a look at to see if we can improve it. Maybe we need to put a crossing light, and at certain time during the time that students, you know, get out of school, maybe we, you know, we turn it on, and other time it become a, you know, stopping sign. In addition to that, I also noticed that last year it did not happen, but the year before, I become getting very annoyed because there's a cop on a, I'm not sure if it's a cop, or maybe it's a CHP, on a motorcycle. And he tried to hand out a lot and lot of tickets, and it make a lot of parents getting first credit. And so I think there needs to be a balance between whether we try to control and policing it and create more problem, and not trying to, you know, put measure in so that we can improve the safety for our students. So I would like the city manager to take note of that and see what our police department can do, and whether we can communicate our concern to the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Buie. You know, to be very clear, the issue of pedestrian safety and pedestrians in general is a city issue. It has to do with the responsibility that we have in transportation and roadways and safe pathways in our city. And I do think that there are opportunities, many of which have been brought forward by Mr. Craig Durfee, that we need to seriously consider, and I hope that our city manager will review these ideas with staff and come back to us with some potential things we can work on together.
Mr. Mayor, if I might comment, and we have shared with the council, and I think some members of the community, the accident history for the area over the last five years. And while I can say it's not exceptional, that never means that it can't be improved. And as I've heard the comments this evening about a committee, I think that there is a terrific opportunity working with parents, and I do think it takes the school, as well as the city, and with the parents, in looking at a range of recommendations. It's a sad fact that in, and I will talk about my experience, I can't talk specific to the high school, that more often than not, it's us who are at fault in those situations. It's our neighborhood. We don't pay as close attention to our driving as we should. As students, we don't pay as close attention to what we're doing because we're talking, we're reading, we're texting, and no amount of regulation will make us safe if we are not paying attention ourselves. But that said, there are tools and ways that we can work together, and that is what we will work on bringing back for you.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Beard?
Yeah, just a couple items. Follow-up on what some speakers talked about, Patty Whitcomb. I think we should follow up on her recommendations, review them. I think they're good ideas. Notification to businesses is very important. I know we're partners with businesses, so this has been a good learning experience, and the impact that businesses should be taking into consideration. I think we should vet Mr. Torres's request in November for the Disabled Americans waiving, so we'll check on that organization that come to us before then, and so we'll consider that at that time. And I would recommend, oh, West Garden Grove Little League. When the time comes up, consider waiving those fees as well. Long-established, fine organization, so we should work with them, and I look forward to their parade again this year. That's it.
Thank you. And item three A through three D, you have some written communication item by item. Madam Clerk?
Do you want me to read it? Okay. The three A is a request from Rob Bruce, Working America Healthcare Program Outreach Associate, for all city fees to be waived for the use of a room at the community meeting center, and the fees waived is approximately two hundred dollars.
Do you have a motion on the item?
I'm making a motion.
Take it.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Buie?
Yep.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Winn?
Aye. That item passes? That item passes?
Oh, yeah, most, I forgot that line. Motion received, five yes votes. This whole reading all their names. Okay, 3B, request from Jeremy Harris, Garden Grove Community Foundation President, that the Garden Grove Community Foundation and the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce be granted use of the Willowwick Golf Course on Wednesday, May 6, 2015, for the annual Garden Grove Community Foundation, Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Golf Classic.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Buie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, oh, Mayor Nguyen, sorry.
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes. Okay. Item number 3C, request from Laura Cassidy, West Garden Grove Youth Baseball President, to waive city fees for the annual opening day parade, scheduled Saturday, February 21st, 2015. Fees waived approximately $1,200.
Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second. Call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Buie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes. Item 3D, request from Daniel Contreras, California Mexican-American Veterans Memorial Committee Chair, for all city fees to be waived for the use of the Courtyard Center on Thursday, February 12, 2015. Fees waived approximately $430.
Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Buie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We'll recess right now to the successor agency business.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll call the successor agency to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Buie?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Aye.
Member Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
We already did oral communication simultaneously with city council, consent items is just the approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Motion to approve the consent items, which is just the warrants. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the vote.
Member Buie?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Fawn?
Here, yes.
Member Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, no items for consideration, any successor agency matters from the members?
I have a question on the previous property appraisals. Where is that now, and where are the next steps for those properties?
I'm sorry, can you? Status of the appraisals of the properties that also. The status of the properties on the appraisals that was approved the last time, the appraisals, my understanding is that those have been done, they have been completed. And those properties, in terms of status, whether we've sold them or not, I don't think we've affected any sales yet.
Excuse me, ma'am? Please.
The appraisals have been completed, Mr. Mayor, and the properties are still within whatever categories that they belong to in the property management plan, they have not been sold yet.
The Hennessy properties, those, the three, those are the remnant properties, those have been sold.
But the other ones are still pending, the ones that are subject to the compensation agreement, those are still pending, those agreements have not been completed with the taxing entities. And those are specifically the Fandango Restaurant property, and the other properties in Site C.
Okay, when they're sold, did you just go on to the market, and that's available for buyers to consider purchasing?
Yeah, that's, normally, that's what happens, but in these particular properties, the remnant properties, those were sold to this particular buyer.
Right.
And the arrangements were entered into, I believe, some time ago. But going forward, most of these properties, yes, they will be put into, on the market, and available buyers sought to take them. I have to also clarify with respect to the Fandango property, the restaurant property, that particular property is unique, and because it has some other special arrangements around it, particularly with respect to parking, that to make their restaurant walk there, it's not just something that you could put in the market, and any buyer can, you know, just buy that particular property. We are particular about the use for that particular one, so that's why it's a specialized marketing, and we have been marketing that through a broker, and we have some restaurants at this point that is interested in that particular property.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other matters from members? If not, then we'll adjourn back to council. I'm sorry, we'll adjourn to San District?
Please call roll, madam.
Member Buie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Fawn?
Here. We've conducted oral communications, no consent items, no public hearings, and items for consideration 4A, please.
Thank you, Mr. Roder. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council, and of the sanitation district. This item is also on the city council agenda, it's a joint item. The item before you this evening is to request that the city council and sanitation district board approve a compensation agreement with the other taxing entities regarding the transfer of the former J.C. Fandango Restaurant Site, and the nine parcels that make up the Site C Hotel Site to the city for economic development purposes. As part of the redevelopment dissolution process, successor agencies were required to prepare long-range property management plans to address the disposition of the former redevelopment agency's properties. In these plans, there are four categories in which to place property. A, properties subject to enforceable obligations; B, properties for governmental use; C, properties to be sold; and D, properties to be transferred to the city for economic development purposes. In Garden Grove's Oversight Board and Department of Finance-approved property management plan, the properties being addressed in this report fall into the category of those to be returned to the city for economic development purposes. Before these properties can be transferred, however, the Department of Finance requires a compensation agreement be reached with the other taxing entities, a list of which is part of this report. Over the past several months, staff has been working with the taxing entities to negotiate and vet the attached finalized compensation agreement. To date, three of the taxing entities have approved the agreement, with the remaining taxing entities scheduled to consider the agreement over the next thirty days or so. Pursuant to the compensation agreement and approval of both the Oversight Board and the Department of Finance, the former J.C. Fandango Restaurant parcel will be transferred to the city. Once that parcel is sold, the proceeds will be deposited into the Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund, and distributed to the taxing entities by the county auditor controller. Similarly, upon approval of the Oversight Board and the Department of Finance, the Site C Hotel Site parcels will be transferred to the city as well. However, in this case, the parcels will be transferred to the developer pursuant to the Grove District Resort Hotel Development Agreement for the development and construction of the Site C Hotel project. The taxing entities will benefit long-term from this by the significant increase in taxable, taxable, pardon me, taxable value of the properties, once the project is built. The agreement gives the city up to three years to transfer the properties to the developer for that hotel project. Staff recommends that the city council approve the compensation agreement by and among the other taxing entities regarding the transfer of the successor agency-owned former Fandango Restaurant parcel, and the parcels that make up the Site C Hotel Site to the city for economic development purposes, and authorize the interim city manager to execute said agreement, and make minor modifications as needed thereto, and that the Garden Grove Sanitary District approve the compensation agreement by and among the other taxing entities regarding the transfer of the successor agency-owned former Fandango Restaurant parcel, and the parcels that make up the Site C Hotel Site to the city for economic development purposes, and authorize the interim general manager to execute said agreement, and make minor modifications as needed thereto. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the board?
The interim general manager is Mr. Alan Roder. Thank you. Just to be clear, I think we need to change a mistake in this document. Just under general manager, it says Matthew Fertal.
Any questions, board members? Have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Call for vote, please.
Member Buie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Yes.
President Fawn?
Yes.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Any other matters from the board?
Excuse me, do we want to take the council vote at the same time?
I'm sorry.
This same item is also on the city council agenda, so she's saying, do we want to take the city council vote?
Procedurally, city manager, do we do it two separate times, or?
It would reflect to the city attorney.
Yep.
Currently, the sanitary district is the agency that is in, has convened, so you've concluded the vote on that. I suggest that when you reconvene into the council, and it comes up on the agenda, you can vote on the city one at that time.
Understood. Any other matters from the board members? All right, if not, we'll adjourn and reconvene on Tuesday, February 24th, at 6:30.
Okay, we'll reconvene the council meeting now. We have consent items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a number of items on your consent calendar. With council's pleasure, I will simply summarize those instead of reading the entire item. First, item 4A is a cooperative agreement between the cities of Santa Ana, Costa Mesa, Fountain Valley, for traffic signal coordination on Harbor Boulevard. This is a priority effort between the cities and through the Orange County Transportation Authority. The second item is approval of a request to rename the Garden Grove West Library after Congressional Medal of Honor recipient, Tabor Rubin. Maria Strife, my office has done a lot of work on it, has worked with the family, and should the council like separate presentation on that, or to be introduced to the family, we would be happy to do that as part of that item. You have the warrant list, and that concludes, and waiver, full reading of ordinances as listed.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to pull item 4B, I have a question on it.
Okay. Do you have a motion for the ballots?
I'll move it. Second.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Buie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Item 4B, Mr. Beard?
Yeah, the only reason why I pulled it is, I work for the County of Orange, OC Community Resources, under that is OC Public Libraries, and that affects, I have direct contact and business with that every day, basically. So I would assume I should recuse myself, just to avoid any conflict of interest. Good practice. I'll do so now.
Do you have a motion for item 4B?
Move the motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard? Councilmember Buie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, four yes votes.
We have no public hearings today, and item 6A, commissioner appointments.
Mr. Mayor, you have before you this evening, appointment to a variety of city commissions, for a little bit of summary, both for the benefit of the council, as well as for the public, and you received some comments earlier this evening about the change in the process. What we had done upon soliciting for applications, and you had a terrific response from the community, we provided all the background information on all the applicants to every member of the council, and asked them to consider all of those applicants based on their requests. We had several applicants who sought appointment to multiple committees, and others that simply requested a singular commission. The council members went through that, and we asked each council member then to prioritize the applicants in number one, number two, and number three, in descending priority, so that we could then collect all of that together, and we were able to create the list of nominees that you see in the staff report before you this evening. There has been no communication between council members, all of those, that input came directly to the city clerk's office, and we generated the report that members of the council and members of the public this evening have. Again, point of clarification on it, they are nominees, they aren't appointees, they are nominees, and we have applicants, the city council has the freedom to pick and choose as it so desires. Under the Garden Grove Municipal Code, the mayor will make the nominations, but it requires an affirmative action vote of the city council. With that, Mr. Mayor, city clerk, I'd be happy to answer any questions we can to assist you in public.
Thank you. So, thank you to everybody that submitted applications, and, you know, Ms. Mercariel, based on what I've, you know, seen and heard, and I know that you're very active in the community, and you've served in commissions in the past, and you've ran for city council, and, you know, we all appreciate that. For this consideration, for this commission, for these commissions, I think that because, you know, you're, the only person that have your application in, and personally, I don't think it would be appropriate to reopen the process. This is a privilege to serve on these commissions, and we absolutely value your time as well. I know that many of you who aren't even in commissions, attend these city council meetings and voice your opinions, and all that is very appreciated. So, at this point, we have these nominees in front of us, that I've received and considered from my colleagues. Before we move, are there any questions on these?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up an item related to the planning commission. I had selected as my top priority George Bridigam for that, and so I'd like to ask that the, we reconsider the input, the nominee of Colby Keo, no reflection on him, it's just the process is, he was my recommendation, so I'd ask the council to reconsider and ask the mayor to place that as my nominee, or to recommend to him that he submit that name of George Bridigam, in lieu of that other person. Well... It's just a recommendation to the mayor.
Yes, sure, sure.
To honor my request for this particular nominee, because I believe, the process is, I understood that we were accorded, each council member a priority or top pick for each commission. And with the mayor having additional picks based on the number of applicants, or number of people on that commission, so as a courtesy, as my selection, I would ask...
And Mr. Beard, did you have a second choice and a third choice for?
Yeah, they were also the top picks of other people, but those are, they are, those people are also on there now. So, we're in a situation, so I'm left without a nominee, but I do want to substitute Colby Keo, and insert instead my preferred nominee for the position. He's experienced commissioner, he's been on other commissions, traffic commission, sanitation, long-term resident, you heard him speak tonight, he's well-versed in the city and his background, and so I think he would serve excellent in this position, and I would like to see him continue on in that capacity, so...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second it, and the reason is, we, you know, I served as a planning commissioner for the city for four years, and so is Councilman Beard. We understand that planning commissioner task is not a simple task, you know, people serving in that capacity need to understand the city code well. And when I first joined the council, I was blessed by the fact that there are, you know, quite a few in that council, in that commission, that would provide the guidance to me. And so I think it is important to have some person in that commission to, you know, to, you know, as a subject matter expert for the other commission. And also to respect Councilman Beard, you know, it is his top choice, and I believe that we, you know, we should respect his choices. Earlier, I heard my colleague, my friend, Mrs. Blackburn, concerned about the posting on, you know, about the school in West Garden Grove, and why I have a couple concerned about, you know, one of the post by our former, he's still a current planning commissioner. I believe... know, one of the posts by our former, he's still a current planning commissioner. I believe that that is just one incident, and I also noticed that even though he posts, you know, a few, quite a few posts, but most of that post is to encourage people to, you know, to be civil and not to calling people names, and I think that is inappropriate. The issue that I think Mr. Brethingham running into is, he is trying to advocate and be a good, you know, steward for that group, and so he jumped in to try to calm people down, as people are putting a lot of comment. And so I, but I think, Mr. Bretingham, I think in the future, you might want to be a little more, you know, cautious, because you could be, you know, misinterpret on your intent. So, having said that, I would like to, you know, second the motion by Councilman Beard.
According to municipal code, is that something...
No, my motion is to recommend to the mayor that he submit this person as an applicant, as a nominee.
Okay, thank you for both your considerations. I will... Is there any more comment on that?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on it as well. And I would agree, actually, with what was just said, because we've actually handled this process differently than I've seen in the past under the last two consecutive mayorships, where I know that the way it's written in the code kind of says that the mayor makes all the nominations, and then they're ratified by vote of council. The way it's always operated in the past is that each commissioner gets, I mean, each council member gets kind of their own pick, or is accorded their own pick, which is even how it was worded this time. And then the mayor gets the remaining three on the commissions that have seven. So, it was done differently this time. We were asked to submit several names for each commission. I know on planning commission, I submitted several names, and only one of those appears on here, so, I mean, you know, I'm not unhappy overall, but I would say if there's a council member that has a strong feeling for one particular commissioner, then I would encourage that we respect that.
And I would echo all that, too. I didn't get a chance to see all the posts and what was said, but I do know George as, on a side, as a friend. His son is actually one of my co-campaign manager for this election that I'm in right now. I've never seen George to do or do say anything that's improper, and I can't really take a side on this one, out of caution and abundance of not knowing all the facts, but I would echo everything that my colleagues have said, that we should respect a council member's request for a nominee short of having concrete evidence that he did something that's completely illogical or unexpected.
Well, I'd like to consider what all of my colleagues have said. I have observed Mr. George Brightingam, who is in question here, not only by myself, but other folks that have emailed in, and many folks from West Garden Grove who are on the site, expressed their concern about Mr. George Brightingam's reactions. Not necessarily the post, the post itself definitely is troubling, but also Mr. George Brightingam's reactions to that post, that is very polarizing, to say the very least. And I would also say that I do have direct experience with Mr. George Brightingam. Prior to sitting down with him during my campaign to meet with him, we did have an interaction online as well, where I was accused of potentially having communist sympathies. And, do you remember that, George?
I remember that.
Yes. So, that kind of behavior, that kind of behavior is not appropriate in any city leadership. So, I would like to ask that my colleagues put forward another name, if the person in question here is Mr. Colby Keo.
But there's, point of order, there's a motion, a second, on the floor, to recommend to the mayor that we submit this.
City Attorney?
There is nothing that would prohibit city council action on a motion for a recommendation that's separate and apart from the process by which the final appointment authority rests with the mayor, subject to approval by the city council.
I've heard your recommendations, colleagues. I respect what you've said. I do have direct experience myself, and I am representing many folks that have responded in much disappointment to the reaction that was solicited from that post. You may not have posted it, but you did reply to it as well, and it is a deep concern of how the community is viewed as east and west, of as one part of the city, and how it's viewed with a certain stigma, and that it's basically not in accord with our values as a city.
Mr. Mayor, out of respect, I think tonight, you have heard all four of your council have expressed our wish, and I just simply urge you to, you know, take a reconsideration of your selection and listen to our recommendation.
I've heard your recommendation, and according to city attorney, it is what I've heard, and I've asked as a compromise, Mr. Jones, if you do not see the person that you've nominated on there, to please put that name forward.
Again, I go back to the motion that we recommend to the mayor, that George Brightingam be substituted for this person as the nominee for the planning commission. Now, we all subject to our opinions, I'd like to base it on the experience of his work on the commission, his work in the city, his dedication to the city, his commitment to the city. I'm not talking about posts, but if we want to talk about the West Garden Grove Neighborhood Watch Site, which is a very effective site for communicating to other residents, all we all know that networks and sites, websites, have a tendency to, over particular hot-button issues, to incite people, and they go back and forth with each other. I think this, the website, and these administrators of the website, have done an excellent job of keeping it civil, keeping the controversy down by eliminating all the posts that go back and forth. I think Mr. Brightingam expressed tonight, all the situation that happened with that. So, I don't think one particular instance, or the subjective feelings of one person, should discredit the abilities and experience of this person serving on the planning commission once again, and serving our city with his experience.
Thank you, Mr. Beard.
And I would like to second it.
Excuse me, sir? I'd like to talk about the understanding of the city code, and also the subject matter expertise that you have brought up, Councilmember Beard, and based on what Mr. George Brightingam had shared with us during public comments, is that he does not understand the codes and the regulations, and how there is possibly a conditional use permit that the school district needs to apply for, and that there needs to be a certain process. That is not correct, that there isn't a CUP issued for Chapman, for a certain age group. That's... Thank you. So, that's what I heard, and is there a record of that? Anyhow, thank you for your recommendation. If you'd like to vote on the recommendation, I'm more than happy to call for a vote for the recommendation.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
Wait, what are we talking about?
I think George Brightingam be recommended to the mayor.
Oh, okay.
That's what we're recommending.
Not to recommend, not to approve on this, this file list?
Not on the list yet, no.
Okay.
The motion is to...
We start over.
Go for the vote again.
Is to recommend to the mayor, is what this is for.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahn?
I would abstain on this vote, based on the fact that I do know George personally, and that I don't want to say one way or the other to make an allegation that I support him or otherwise, because as a friend. And also, I haven't had a chance to review the posts thoroughly, to make sure that whatever's alleged is actually accurate. Therefore, I will abstain from deciding on the proposal.
Thank you for the recommendation, colleagues. I do not accept that recommendation. So, once again, the compromise here that's on the table that I'm putting in front of you is to have another name put forward. I selected a name of someone who's qualified, that's dedicated, but I am more than happy to listen to your recommendation of someone else.
Connie Margolin is like I'd like to recommend.
That's accepted. So, for the matter of planning commission, thank you so much.
Connie Margolin is my...
So, Connie Margolin, is she, she's not on, referred for any other commission, right?
She's on the planning commission right now.
Okay. She's on a planning commission now, perfect. Okay, so, all the nominees here, the only change in front of us is instead of Colby Keo, you're recommending Connie Margolin. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve, and to approve my appointments to these commissions?
I may have a motion to approve.
Is there a second? There's been a motion to approve. Mr. Beard, you're...
I will second it.
Thank you. Call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, four yes votes, with Councilmember Bowie voting no.
Thank you. Let's continue on. We have item 7A.
This, Mr. Mayor, this is the item that you previously acted on as the sanitary district board, involving the compensation agreement binding among the various taxing agencies for proceeds received.
Is there a motion? This is the second vote on this.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
7B?
This is an appropriation of grant funding for project numbered 7246 and 7258, which involves reconstruction and improvements on Harbor Boulevard, Phase 1 and Phase 2, grant funding in the amount of $652,102.49. This is to simply bring forward grant funding the city has received for this project, so it may be appropriated to the project currently in progress.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Item 8A.
This is the second reading and adoption for affordable housing development at 1274 1 Main Street and 10882 Stanford Avenue, Garden Grove. The adoption of an ordinance approving zone change amendment, adoption ordinance approving development agreement with Jamboree Housing Corporation. We have for you ordinance number 2852 for second reading and adoption, as well as ordinance number 2853 for second reading and adoption by title only.
And we need to read the titles. We do need to read the titles of the ordinance. Would you like me to do that? Please do. For 8A, ordinance number 2852, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove approving zone change amendment number A012-2014, changing the zoning designation of a residential parcel located at 100882 Stanford Avenue, assessors parcel number 08920228 from CCSP-CCR20, Community Center Specific Plan, Community Center Residential Area 20, to CC3 Civic Center Core. And I'll let you act on that one, and then I'll read the title of the second ordinance.
Is there been a motion?
So moved. Are we just doing, just, we're taking them one at a time? 8A first. Okay, yeah, I'll move 8A. That's 8A1. 8A1.
I'll second that.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
8A2, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, the ordinance is number 2853, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove approving development agreement number DA001-2014, binding between the city of Garden Grove and Jamboree Housing Corporation.
Fair motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Item 9A.
This is matters from the mayor, city council members, and city manager. We have one item that has been submitted, consideration of prohibiting the sale of pets from commercial breeding facilities within the city of Garden Grove, as requested by Councilmember Beard. We do have the honor with us this evening of having Maria Stipe with us, who has done some of the basic research, working with Councilmember Beard. That is part of the staff report and available to members of the public, so I will defer to the council member and Maria to present this item as the council so desires.
Okay, I brought this forward. May I start?
Please.
This is, and this pun is intended, this is a pet project of mine, and I do support, well, do not support inhumane treatment of animals of any kind overseas, over the country, out the country, in these puppy mills, kitten factories that are established. You know, what brought this to mind is, a month, two or three ago, a group came up, and they were supportive of this, commercializing, selling the commercialized bred dogs, and the inhumane treatment, and the speaker earlier gave a very good report on what happens, and this and that. So, just to tell you what I know through staff, is there's four pet stores in the city that would affect. There's other cities throughout the whole Southern California area. I think in some of, we got some written information, 75 throughout the country, perhaps, state, but that have banned the sale of commercially bred pets. What really brought it to light for me was when this group came up three, two or three months ago, I think I saw that truck delivering pets into the pet store close to my house on Valley View. I went in there recently, and I saw the pets, and now I can understand why they sell them commercially, because it was from $800 to $1,200 for some of these bred puppy mills, these animals that came from out of state. So, with that, I thought, well, there's the reason, the commercial aspect. I think the big pet stores have banned it themselves. We have an abundance of available animals, and through shelters, through rescue, dogs and cats, so I think we have ample volume of animals that need love and attention and care locally. I don't think we need to go out of state for people to buy these. We have breeders, legitimate professionals, who are raised in a healthy environment, and we heard about the problems with commercially bred animals. So, I was hoping the council could see its way to drafting an ordinance to ban the sale, and with some, perhaps some provision that they can sell, you know, shelter dogs, or rescue dogs, or something of that nature, to allow them to do that, only for animals that are available now. So, that would be my request, and Murray has more information to add on it, or anybody. And that's my feelings, and that's where I think I'd like to go as a city.
If I may, procedurally, though, we have to probably give notice to these affected businesses, or at least give them a chance to be heard?
We most certainly should, and we should contact them. We do have four pet stores. Not all of those sell dogs, but as a matter of professional courtesy, we should, as, if council proves going forward, when we have a draft ordinance, we should provide that to them, and then bring it back here for council action.
That's good. I have a question regarding the proposal, or, you know, our discussion right now. Are we looking at banning the purchase as well from out of state? Because it sounds like there are some breeders, I just heard that...
I'm not sure if I understand.
I'm hearing from you that we want to ban the sale. Does this also look at purchasing from out of state or out of the area? We're not, we can't do that, can we? Okay. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Because that would seem bizarre to me. Okay. Any other colleagues want to chime in on this discussion? No? Because it has been agendized from the previous meeting, which means we can recommend staff to prepare, to prepare something for us. Okay, let's do that. Do we need to call for a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I would move the drafting of an ordinance for banning the commercial breeding of pets in, in pet stores within Garden Grove.
Second. Call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
I want to thank the mayor and the council for going along on this.
And I have the item that folks have spoken about today in support of, and I would like to support it, the council. What we don't have is closure in our city on the matters of alleged nepotism, and also the legality of the subsequent action that led to, up to the Barlag settlement agreement. And what I'm asking is for the council to join me in requesting the state attorney general's office, as well as the Orange County District Attorney's office, to investigate the allegations of nepotism involving Garden Grove officials, and the legality of subsequent actions, including but not limited to the Barlag settlement agreement. And before I make the motion to agendize this item for discussion in our next meeting, I, I'd like to say that the reason why this is important is because many of the parties, if we do an internal investigation or hire a third-party firm, that they don't have the authority to issue subpoenas, and, and to really get to the bottom of this. And this has been an issue that I hear again and again during every single council meeting, and you're here as well, you hear that. I also see it continued in the media, in, in various communities, and this is a question that people continue to ask me on, and I'm glad that folks do. That means they care, that the public cares about their city, and that's very important. So I ask that you support having a public discussion on the agenda for next time, and so I motion to agendize, requesting the Orange County District Attorney's office and the attorney general to investigate allegations of nepotism involving Garden Grove officials and legality of subsequent actions, including but not limited to the Barlag settlement agreement. I kindly ask for a second, so we can agendize this and, and have a discussion on it.
Well, if I may just see as far as where your thoughts are, Mr. Mayor. So you're asking the DA's office or the attorney general's office to investigate. Presuming that there was no misconduct, then we're good. Presuming that these actors who you're saying actually did commit a crime, and they Roger up and plead the fifth, and basically just guess for an attorney, I'm just trying to think through the, the process that we're trying to do here. Are we trying to get an answer to what happened, or, because I'm not having clarity on the reason why we're doing this. It's basically to try to correct what we've done wrong in the past? We've done that with the instillment of the new policy we have by the recent council, as far as the no nepotism in our city, as far as the hiring between relatives. But the past, though, is, I think, I'm just trying to see, to what degree would the DA's office or the attorney general's office, are they going to indict, or are they going to possibly prosecute these people if there is an allegations, or if there is evidence of misconduct or intentional misconduct?
I imagine that if criminal activity is to be found, that people will be prosecuted, and that the proper authorities would do their due diligence and, and serve the public in, in their authority. And if I may, I know that the settlement agreement and general release has been public, online, so if I may speak to some of these points, there's nothing confidential in this, in fact, you can find it online. And I find it very odd and quite disturbing that this settlement agreement supersedes federal and state policies. The Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the American with Disabilities Act and Rehabilitation Act, Family Medical Leave Act and California Family Act, Age Discrimination Employment Act, and it goes on through K, even the Firefighters procedural Bill of Rights Act are superseded by this agreement. That's concerning to me. I have never seen such a thing. I question the legality of this agreement in and of itself, and we need to seek the proper authorities to find out whether this has been done in a fashion that is in accord with the law, and also doing the right thing in terms of our ethics as city council members, representing the best interests of the public, and doing the right thing, even if it is at a cost to our agency or to ourselves. Because that's what we are trained to do in the AB 1234, and, you know, I've taken it recently, I'm actually still in the process, so it's very fresh to me. And I know that we need to restore trust, and, and we also need to be transparent in a way where we welcome the public engagement, that this city council is not just an elected five members, but this is your city council, that we are your representatives. So that's why I'm bringing this forward, I'm echoing what I've heard in the public from the people, from diverse backgrounds throughout the city. And I hope that we will move forward, but I don't think we have closure on this issue yet, so it's difficult to move forward. So I ask that my colleagues join with me, and to approve this to be agendized, so that we can discuss it publicly and engage the community in that process.
I would second that. I, I would like to see closure.
Thank you.
Could I have comment? I haven't had a chance to comment yet.
Sure, yes. We do have a second.
To have this opportunity to serve the public is a privilege, not a right, and I have prepared this, because this is a matter that is very important to me. In fact, I dropped a lot of urgent issue to, to meet with, you know, the interim city manager and the city attorney, as well as many of my constituents over the last couple day, couple days. Yesterday afternoon at about 4:00 PM, I got a phone call from the reporters of the voice of Orange County, asking me what is my thoughts on the mayor request to put this on, on the agenda, and I was totally stunk and surprised, because I have not, know nothing about it until I got a phone call from, you know, reporters. So I, I, once I heard that, I, I thought so much about it, and I couldn't, you know, sleep, because I, this is an issue that is very important to me. Transparency and, you know, proper conduct of our city is at the top of my, of my mind. You know, we, we are here because we earn the trust of the public, and, and my colleague, I urge you to tread cautiously, and respect the wishes of those you are elected to serve. You know, as a public servant, we owe it to our constituents to do what is best for the resident and for the city as a whole. From day one, I have made it very clear that I would support dissecting problems, only to learn from it, so we could make better decisions. I am all for transparency. I didn't seek public's office so I could be used and manipulated by those that wanted to further their personal agenda. I'm here for the residents of the City of Garden Grove, pure and simple. I, you know, would like to focus our thought and our energy on growing our city, work on fostering a business-friendly environment so we can attract new businesses, how to better care for our seniors, our residents, focus on the future of our city, and I want my time on this council to be purposeful. Each of us are uniquely qualified, and we are here because we want to contribute our time and our expertise. And so, Mayor Nguyen, I did not appreciate being surprised by the media about your intention of calling for a formal investigation into the contract signed by the city and the former fire chief, Ballad. Perhaps the next time you could show this council a little more respect and cautious by sharing it with us before you tip off the media. I want transparency, but we need to act responsibly. If we are not going, if we are going to use city resource or cost taxpayer money, we will need to be able to answer why and what we are hoping to accomplish, as well as how this will benefit the city and its residents. You know, we are no longer campaigning, we, you are now the mayor of this city, and collectively, this council is responsible for the city government and the community as a whole. With that being said, let's work together to move things in a more positive and productive direction. And this is, having said that, because I need, I'm sorry about the long leading to, to this conversation, but that is important, because I want my resident to know that. I am all for transparency, and I am concerned about this, this action, you know, agenda item, because I believe that it may not be done for the good of the city. If we want to, to, you know, have transparency, I believe we have a new council, we have a new mayor, we have a new city interim city manager. I think together, we can take a look at what has happened in the past, and learn that lesson, and report back to the resident, all open, and the resident and us will be able to see if there is any probable, probable cause that warrant an investigation, then we go for it, we go forward with it. But we just don't want to call for an investigation, because if, when we are saying investigation, you are implying there is wrongdoing, there's an illegal criminal, and I'm not sure if anyone here in this room, including you, Mayor Baugh, have shown us the fact that would give us the probable cause that someone or some process have committed an illegal act to call for an investigation. I would be all for a fact-finding, but not an investigation. There will be two outcome of an investigation. One would be we find something bad, and something, someone commit a, an illegal act. The other is, there's nothing wrong with, with what's going on. Now, there may be certain perception here, perception there, there may be some hearsay, but before we move on to an, a real investigation by, by the DA or by the state attorney, you got to have, you got to put forward a probable, probable fact that, that there might be some illegal activity going on, and I haven't seen that.
I, I will ask the public to, to, you know, continue to engage and to let us know your thoughts and feelings. We're here to act in your interest, and I want to assure you that that's what I'm here for. And with all due respect, Councilmember Bowie, I'd like to see that when you're all for transparency, to act in that way as well, and not just in words. I understand the campaign is over, and we have a lot of work to do. And public perception is very important. Public perception builds trust, and if there isn't trust, we need to take action to restore that trust. And that is a promise that I've made, and with integrity, I'd like to keep that promise. That, that is my promise, and I believe my mandate by those who have voted for me, and, and also those that did not vote, but still take interest in these concerns. I'd like to move forward. Calling for an investigation and asking for probable cause, I'm not the authority on this, and I'd like to see that we do call upon the Orange County District Attorney and our state attorney general to review these matters and take action and recommend action as well. So that's the intention here. The motion is very clear, it's received, a second. I'd like to call for a vote if there are no more council members that would like to chime in on this.
Mayor Protem? Thank you. I guess that the main point I would just like to say is, I think that the action being called for is inappropriate for the situation. I understand there's, there's a lot of public misperception, or there's a lot of, there's kind of a lack of closure on this item, and so I think it needs to be talked about. I don't think the appropriate mechanism is to suggest that the district attorney and the state attorney general need come investigate us. As, as a possible alternative, I would say that the five of us as a fresh new council have recently selected our interim city manager. Perhaps we direct him to do an internal investigation of where do we stand? Have we actually properly, adequately addressed closure in terms of the nepotism issue as described? Do, do we have a valid agreement with, with Barlag, that sort of thing? I think we could all agree he's a sort of neutral third-party who we all picked to fill that post. Not that he needs anything else on his plate, but I'm just trying to think of a sort of different way to skin this, because I don't, it's hard to address all the sort of perceptions out there of what happened. Anytime there's threat of litigation, actions have to be taken in closed session. The city probably didn't do the greatest job of communicating what came out of that, but I don't, I don't perceive that there was any, like, criminal wrongdoing or any wrongdoing or stuff in the process, and I think any possible errors in the process were corrected by bringing the contract back, so there may be still outstanding issues of what is he doing if he stole payroll, and those sort of things. So I think it's fair to talk about all that, and I'm all for transparency, but this was the, this was the silliest silly season of an election cycle that I've ever seen in my entire life in the city, and there were a lot of very high-level allegations, and there was a big league war between a labor union and a 22-year mayor, and there was all kinds of stuff going on, so I don't particularly care to dig all that back up, I just would like to have closure on it and be able to move on.
I'd like to have closure on it, I made that very clear. City manager, if you have any response to Mayor Protem?
Can I ask a question first? Just a comment. If, if Mayor Protem is offering as a substitute motion, I would go for that as a second. Do you have an internal review by the city manager's office, and so?
I would second that, too.
Mr. Mayor? Since I'm the subject of the motion, the second, let me defend myself. Let me offer a suggestion, because there are elements that Mayor Protem mentions that most certainly I can bring forward and, and present to you as counsel. We are, we looking at the language and the ordinance on nepotism, and we've reached out to the employee organizations on that, and we can certainly report back to you on that. Certainly the disposition of former Chief Barlag and his working arrangement, that's something several of you have asked me about. I've taken what the former city manager had assigned, looked at that, I think there need to be some changes. That's simply, I feel my prerogative as your interim manager, so we are in the process of making those changes. There are elements, using the settlement agreement as an example, I cannot serve as your secondary non-legal legal counsel to a document written up by the city attorney. There are various aspects of this that provision of information is only going to be obtained from individuals who are not in your employ, not under your direction, and whom you have no authority to question, and raise some of the issues that I believe that either members and/or members of this council and the community would like to hear. Let me suggest... Let me suggest to you that we merge the two items since the mayor's asked for this item and come back to you for formal consideration, but that the internal review that you just asked for be added to the mayor's motion so you have the benefit of that information along with what the mayor has requested. During this interim, I will do my best to contact both the DA's office and the AG's office to seek their advisement since that is in essence what is being asked here, to help fuller, or flesh us out a little bit for you in terms of what they might do if you made that request. So I think we can pull the various elements together in one motion, you know, recognizing, and I know all of you do, what, what you have tasked us to do and accomplish in a very short period of time. Let me ask if you set that for two weeks, that we have the latitude to request a continuance in the event that we don't have all the information for you in two weeks? Because I don't want this council nor the community trying to address this unless we've got all the information for you. That's not fair to you, it's not fair to members of the public. Those would be my comments.
I would be okay with that.
I would like to, I'm okay with that as long as we choose the language appropriately. I do not want to have in that title that we would like to ask the DA or the state attorney to investigate because to me, that investigation imply that, that there had been some, some possible illegal activity and I don't think we know that here. So I am okay if you need their expertise, their advice, that you would seek their, their, their input, but I would not be okay if you, you know, ask them, you know, look, is there any possible investigation, you know, possible illegal that, that warrant an investigation? Because I think if we do that, we are jumping the gun here.
Councilmember Bowie, would you be comfortable if I conferred with the attorney general's office and conferred with the district attorney?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the substitute motion, Councilmember Beard, any response to?
Well, I think you need the best compromises, merge them together and go in that direction. Probably be supportive of that.
Is there a second on that motion?
A second.
A second.
Any further discussion? Let's call and vote to agendize the item.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Phong?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you colleagues. That is a great example of cooperation and collaboration to seek consensus on addressing an issue that is very important to the public and very important to all of us here. At this time, if there are no more matters from members?
I have one.
Okay.
You know, Garden Grove is home to probably about 70,000 Vietnamese refugee here, Vietnamese Americans. And probably half a million in Orange, in Southern California is saddened us to uncover that last Tuesday. The city of Riverside have entered into a sister city relationship with Gunther City, a, the largest city in South Vietnam, not, not in South Vietnam, but south of the capital of Vietnam. And that is a really, to, to, to many of us, that is a really inconsiderable action by the council of the city of Riverside. And here's the reason why. The city of Gunther is, government is part of a very brutal communist regime, a government that has no respect for basic human rights. They severely restrict freedom of expression and freedom of the press. And we have, you know, just don't take the word for it. That is a proof, if we check out the reports by the US Department of State in 2013, Vietnam is the top three country that violate human rights. Number two, they imprison anyone, student, peasant, elderly, and even religious leaders who would not submit to the government demand. A government that does not hesitate to subject its residents, its citizens to cruel and inhuman treatment or police brutality with excessive use of forces. Those who dare to question the government policy or criticize the parties are routinely subject to police intimidation, harassment, intrusive surveillance, and oftentimes fatal beatings. Number three, this government turned their back away and allow large-scale human trafficking for sexual and labor exploitation. You can see that on the website at the www-humantrafficking.org, countries Vietnam, you will see it. There are more than 80,000 victims of human trafficking just last years alone. And number four, there are widespread corruption and stealing of peasants and churches' properties. If you want proof, you don't have to look far, just go to Google and search for Vietnam protests by peasant. You see lot and lot of article in English about that violation. And having said that, our city have passed many, you know, proclamation and resolutions to restrict the movement of the, that brutal communist regime here into our city. I thought it would be, you know, if we would, we would do a good deed for our Vietnamese American constituents, resident in this city by writing a letters to express our concern, the concern of our Vietnamese American living here in Garden Grove as well, you know, elsewhere in the world. And I would like to put on the agenda to discuss that at the next meeting. I have here the letter of, of some of the Vietnamese that they, that I heard they have gathered more than a thousand signatures just in one weekend alone. And if anyone would like to have a copy, I would be glad to hand it out to you. For now, I just would like to give a copy to my, to my council. One other thing, over the past couple day, I have heard that State Senator Janet Nguyen, former State Senator Lou Korea, have all written the letter to the city of Riverside and, and the office of Congressman Alan Lawenthal have informed me that the congressman will also write a letter to the city of Riverside urging them to reconsider this, this issue.
Any other matters?
Mr. Mayor, if I may just, I apologize, defer to Councilmember Beard.
Sure.
Real quick, I want to express and acknowledge that Sister, City Garden Grove has a sister city in South Korea, Onyang. And that city, we have been over, for over 20 years, we've been participating. I bring this up because we exchange students, 10 of theirs, 10 of ours, go back and forth. They stay with host families, it's a nonprofit organization, they, it's a cultural, educational, it's a great program, it's been going on for a long while. This past week, we had our Korean students come over here and as always, they had a really great time. They saw Garden Grove, Garden Grove was exemplary host as they always are. The city was very responsive and helpful. All the donors who contributed to their stay here, the host families, it was a delightful time. The hotline for me this year was the city sponsors' dinner, it was at Carolina's. Councilman Phong showed up. I want to thank the mayor, he couldn't make it from a prior engagement, but he gave me the honor of passing out honorary citizen, certificates of citizenship to the South Koreans. They loved it. In one of the letters, they expressed to the mayor, to the city council, to the entire city, their appreciation for taking in their students. So I just want to acknowledge that, it's a great program, it is nonprofit, it's partially scholarship to send our 10 Garden Grove High School students that go over every year. And we do have a 5K run that helps sponsor and support that and I encourage people to be involved in that 5K run or if they are interested in the program, it's on the website. So great program, great experience, great kids, theirs and ours, so.
Want to tell us the website and when the 5K is?
It's on our website. It's a, I think there's a link or connection, but the, the 5K run is at the strawberry festival at that time. We had the first one last year and it was very successful.
Wonderful. And anyone else from the council?
Just want to clarify that the request that I put on the agenda, do we need to approve it?
We need to have a second to have it agendized.
Okay. Could I?
I would second that.
I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Phong?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
You know, I, I did request that we review the MOU between the city of Riverside and the city of Gunther in Vietnam. So, you know, we, that's available to all the council members, I believe? It was shared with everybody as well? I, I believe so.
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. So that's there. I understand that, you know, there are some partnerships between universities for research and some of the funding, I believe, comes from our own United States Department of Agriculture to deal with some of the use of pesticides and, and the issue of bugs killing the plants in that region and how this would further develop research that would benefit just, you know, humanity. So that's also a part of it from my understanding. So maybe if we can do some more research into this, I know that folks have been very reactive to it, you know, and this kind, this has been kind of a pattern in the community as well. So I hope that we will really look into this and, and really have some kind of leadership as well. It's, it's important to know about the struggles and the sacrifices of folks that have made those sacrifices for us to be here. And I, I just think, you know, in the future, when we'll have new generations that haven't experienced, you know, the, the war and, and that they, that they will know the stories, but that eventually someday, that there will be reconciliation and that the, the youth of, of both sides of the ocean will be able to share in, in common values and, and a common future. So I look forward to discussing that further. And before we continue on, I would like to ask the city clerk, because I believe some of the folks here haven't heard who's on the commissions yet. So I am like, wait a minute, why are folks here staying really late?
Before we move on, since you bring that up, I just want to have a couple minutes to clarify one very important point, if you, if I may.
Certainly.
This fight by the Vietnamese American, the Vietnamese political refugee, is not about the fight between what they have done 40 years or 60 years ago. It's not about some 58,000 US soldiers died in our homeland defending freedom. This fight that we brought on because we believe in the value for human rights and the basic freedoms. Most of us here take freedom for granted as the air that we breath. Now, the reason that we fight the city, the relationship between the city of Riverside and the city of Gunther or any other city with, with a city government body that does not respect human rights and freedom is because, is because how on earth could we enter a relationship with a city that are bitten on their, on their citizen? We, I thought we are a proud cities where we value human rights, we value freedom, we value government transparency. None of those exist in Vietnam and therefore entering a sister relationship with such a city I fight is very troubling. Now, I would not against the US policy in term of doing business with them, but we can share university educational system without having, entering a sister city relationship because that send a wrong message. Next week, Congresswoman Mimi Wonders told me that next week, the Congress, our Congress in DC is considering a bill to address the issue of human trafficking. Imagine our, our relative, our friends who are subject to human trafficking because they are poor, they are defenseless and a lot of them are being forced across the borders to become sex slavery. And that still exists by those country, by Gunther. Gunther is the, if you go to the web and you search for the Gunther city, you will see that is one of the most, one of the cities that sent out the most prostitute across our borders. And how could we, how could we do that? So this fight is not about the fight or, or about the bitter ring between the Vietnamese refugee that came here 40 years ago. This is because that government still oppressing and brutally beating on, on their citizen and that's why we want to fight. We want to, to help stopping that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to talk about that.
Thank you for sharing your passion. I, I don't disagree with anything you've said. I, I also think that, anyway, well, now that it's agendized, we'll continue the discussion at the next meeting. I'd like to move on. Madam City Clerk, would you please read the names of the newly appointed commissioners? And, and I also like to issue my congratulations to all of you and also my great gratitude for your service.
For the administrative board of appeals, we have John Hamilton, Brian Newbold, Dung David Nguyen, Robert Toro, Robert Toro and Christina Nguyen. For traffic, Randy Arbghast, Robert Dalton, Bernice Flatabo, Brian Nguyen, David Whaling. For planning, Andrew Kessler, Connie Margolin, Vu Mai, John O'Neill, Joseph Pack, Mark Paredes and Linda Zamora. For parks, recreation and arts, Chan Chung, Curtis Gibson, Asunta Lorfu, Rick Montoya, Andrea Perez, Del Softner, Sophie Tran. For neighborhood improvement, Jim Benson, Maureen Blackman, Nicholas Constantino, Joshua McIntosh, Walter Muniton, Peterson Phong and John Ramirez. And as far as Main Street, I'm going to need a little help on this. I know that's probably the first four that say, the, for property and tenant owners, we have Kristen Gibson, Michael Powells, Jennifer Stewart and Rebecca Wymer. And we only need one at large and there's two names there, so.
I, I move to bring forward Andrew Halberstadt.
Okay. Okay, should I call for a vote?
Wasn't that already voted on as part of the?
Yeah, but not, not for the Main Street one.
Oh, I thought we already did all that.
Just the at-large one wasn't done.
Gotcha, okay, okay. I just presumed that we had already done that, okay.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Phong?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Would you please read the complete names for that?
Okay. Main Street, Kristen Gibson, Michael Powells, Jennifer Stewart, Rebecca Wymer, Andrew Halberstadt.
That would be one, two, three, four, five, six?
Six, yes.
Do we need seven for that?
Right.
Wait, there's Audrey Pickor, is she included in that list?
Not that I mentioned, no.
Okay. We also have Audrey Pickor, who's a property owner as well, and she can be included in that list. Okay, I will move to bring Audrey Pickor into that Main Street commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Phong?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes. Just for information, that's six commissioners.
That's six now? Okay.
Right. We don't have anybody else as an owner of property tenant.
Okay, so there's a vacancy for a property owner or business owner currently on Main Street, so those on a Main Street commission, I guess your first duty is to find someone to fill that seat. And thank you again. Congratulations to all those new commissioners. Is there any kind of ceremony where we swear them in or anything like that? Madam Clerk?
The city clerk's office swears the commissioners in at their very first meeting.
Wonderful. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, in recognition of the hour and knowing that Councilmember Phong's got something he probably really wants to attend this evening, I will withhold my comments, but I do want to mention for members of the public that we are now publishing the manager's memo on the city's website. This is up-to-date information that we provide to members of the council. We're now posting that on the city's website, so members of the public can go and look at that. And just as kind of a little teaser to get your attention, we will have a little update in that report at the end of this week regarding the status of both the fire chief recruitment and the permanent city manager recruitment.
Thank you for those updates. Also, out of respect for the time, I noticed that a couple folks asked me whether we were going to end early today. I think that's relative, and it is 9:30, and it is Election Day. Would we be able to move the closed session to the next meeting? Or do we need a motion on that? Councilmembers?
I would love to move it to the next meeting.
Okay, I thought so, okay. So, I don't think we need a vote on that. We'll move the closed session discussion to the next meeting, and I will adjourn the